Welcome to study session fifteen of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will see round four of E-way bill chapter, page number sixteen to nineteen. And then we will go to round three of supply under GST, page number thirty-two to forty-two. And then we will do round two of whatever we studied yesterday, page number sixty-two to sixty-five. And then based on the time that we have, we will proceed to cover maybe five to six pages. Fix five to six uh new pages today. On that note, let us begin, we will set up the pre-study intention first. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection, my goal is only to make a tiny bit of progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us move to E-way bill. We are supposed to read E-way bill, page number sixteen to nineteen. Page number sixteen. Validity of E-way bill or consolidated E-way bill, rule one thirty-eight, sub-rule ten. The validity of E-way bill depends on the distance to be traveled by the goods. For a distance less than two hundred kilometers, the E-way bill will be valid for a day from the relevant date. For every two hundred kilometers thereafter, the validity will be one additional day from the relevant date. Okay, distance within the country up to two hundred kilometers, one day is the validity period. In cases other than over-dimensional cargo or multimodal shipment in which at least one leg involves transport by ship. For every two hundred kilometers or part thereof, one additional day is given for cases other than over-dimensional cargo. In case if the shipment is done through over-dimensional cargo. Then, distance within country up to twenty kilometer, for every twenty kilometers, they get one day validity. And for every twenty kilometer or part thereof, they get one additional day. Now, we had a couple of open loops when it came to. E-way bill chapter, one was to understand what is over-dimensional cargo. And the other one was to understand what is this RFID. So, we will have that clarified today. So, let me take you to this over-dimensional cargo. It is nothing but this multi-axle vehicle that we see on the roads, isn't it? The lorries that carry wings of airplane or fuselage of airplane. Like the twenty-twenty-five, thirty-two wheeler lorries will be there, isn't it? So, this is over-dimensional cargo, so you can see how big the consignments are. And of course, trucks that carry such a huge consignment will go extremely slowly. So, because the value of the items that are being transported will be running in crores. So, they will go at an extremely slow pace, so for every twenty kilometer, the government gives. The validity to be one day. Considering the speed in mind, for up to twenty kilometer, they get one full day of validity, right? Eleven date means the date on which the E-way bill has been generated and the period of validity shall be counted from the time at which the E-way bill has been generated. And each day shall be counted as the period expiring at midnight of the day immediately following the date of generation of E-way bill. Suppose an E-way bill is generated at zero zero four twelve four A M on fourteenth March. Then, the first day would end on twelve midnight of fifteenth uh sixteenth March. Second day will end on twelfth midnight of sixteen seventeen March and so on. Suppose an E-way bill is generated on twenty-three fifty-eight hours, eleven fifty-eight P M on fourteenth March. Then, the first day would end on twelve, twelve midnight on fifteen sixteen March and second day will end on twelve midnight of sixteen seventeen March and so on. The validity of the E-way bill starts when first entry is made in part B, that is vehicle entry is made first time in case of road transportation. Or first transport document number na- entry in case of rail, air, ship transportation, whichever is the first entry. It may be noted that validity is not recalculated for subsequent entries in part B. A consignor hands over his goods for transportation on Friday to a transporter. However, the assigned transporter starts the movement of goods on Monday. The validity of E-way bill starts to, starts only after the details in part B are updated by the transporter for the first time. In the given situation, the consignor can fill the details in part A on Friday and hand over his goods to the transporter. When the transporter is ready to move the goods, he can fill part B, that is the assigned transporter can fill the details in part B on Monday. And the validity period of the E-way bill start from Monday only. A registered person has to transport goods from its warehouse to its depot located at a distance of five hundred kilometer. In a normal cargo, in the given case, if E-way bill is generated, it will be valid for three days. Over-dimensional cargo means a cargo carried as a single indivisible unit and which exceeds the dimensional limits prescribed in rule ninety-three of. Central motor vehicle rules, which we just saw the picture. Okay, extension of validity period. If validity of the E-way bill expires, the goods are not supposed to be moved. In general, the validity of the E-way bill cannot be extended. However, the validity of the E-way bill can be extended in the following cases. Extension given by commissioner. Commissioner may, on the recommendations of the council, by notification, extend the validity period of an E-way bill. For certain categories of goods as may be specified therein. Extension by transporter in exceptional circumstances. Under circumstances of an exceptional nature, including transshipment. The goods cannot be transported within the validity period of the E-way bill. The transporter may extend the validity period after updating the details on part B if required. Thus, the transporter who is carrying the consignment as per the E-way bill system at the time of expiry of validity period. Can extend the validity period. Such transporter can extend the validity of the E-way bill if the consignment is not being reached the destination within the validity period. Due to exceptional circumstances like natural calamity, law and order issues, transshipment delay, accident of conveyance, et cetera. He needs to explain this reason in details while extending the validity period. The validity of the E-way bill may be extended within eight hours from the time of its expiry. Acceptance of E-way bill. The details of the E-way bill generated shall be made available to the supplier if registered. Where the information in part A has been furnished by the recipient or transporter or recipient if registered. Where the information in party has been furnished by the supplier or transporter. On the common portal and the supplier or regis- recipient as the case may be. Shall communicate his acceptance or rejection of the consignment covered by the E-way bill, rule one thirty-eight, sub-rule eleven. In case the person to whom where the, to whom the information in party is made available does not communicate his acceptance or rejection within the specified time. It shall be deemed that he has accepted the said details. The time limit specified for this purpose is seventy-two hours of the details being made available to him on the common portal. Or the time of delivery of goods, whichever is earlier, rule one thirty-eight, sub-rule twelve. E-way bill generated in one state is valid in another state. The E-way bill generated under this rule or under rule one thirty-eight of the goods and service tax rules of any state or union territory. Shall be valid in every state and union territory, one thirty-eight, sub-rule thirteen. Points to remember. E-way bill is not valid for movement of goods without vehicle number on it. If there is a mistake, incorrect or wrong entry in the E-way bill, then it cannot be edited or corrected. Only option is cancellation of E-way bill within twenty-four hours of generation and generate a new one with correct details. E-way bill may be updated with vehicle number any number of times. The latest vehicle number should be available on E-way bill and should match with the vehicle carrying it in case checked by the department. If multiple invoices are issued by the supplier to recipient, that is. For movement of goods of more than one invoice of same consignor and consignee, multiple E-way bills have to be generated. That is, for each invoice, one E-way bill has to be generated irrespective of the fact. Whether same or different consignor or consignees are involved. Multiple invoices cannot be clubbed to generate one E-way bill. However, after generating all these separate E-way bills, one consolidated E-way bill can be prepared for transportation purposes. Or if goods are going in the same vehicle. Okay, now, we have completed the first target, which is page number sixteen to nineteen. Round four also completed. Next, let us go to supply under GST, round three, page number thirty-two to forty-two. Okay, we will start from here. Since the transfer is within the same business, the transfer or unit would not charge any amount to the transfer unit. Similarly, it is also possible that one branch supplies services to another branch of the same entity without consideration. These transactions are often termed as self-supplies. Under GST, these transactions, though undertaken without consideration, will also qualify as supply. Provided the transfer of goods or services is between different locations of same legal entity. As these are transactions between distinct persons or establishments of distinct persons. Example number twenty. Raghubir Fabrics transfers thousand shirts from his factory located in Lucknow to his retail showroom in Delhi. So that the same can be sold from there. The factory and retail showroom of Raghubir Fabrics are registered in the states where they are located. Although no consideration is charged, supply of goods from factory to retail showroom constitutes supply. However. Transfer of, transfer between two units of a legal entity. Under single GST registration apparently within the same state will not be considered as supply. This can be understood with the example, following example. Lucknow factory, Khaanpur showroom, they both are under same registration, therefore, it will not be considered as supply. Goods moving between factory to to showroom or showroom back to factory, it will not be considered as supply. So the, so the deciding factor is whether the establishments have same pan, yes, yes. They, it is a single end registration, sorry, it is a single entity only, but the registrations have been multiple. And those registrations have different registration number or not. If it is no, then there is no transfer. No, it is not considered as supply because I have same GST number. If they have different GST numbers, even within the same state, then the transfer between them will be considered as supply. Supply of goods or services are both between an employer or and employee. In terms of definition of related person given above, employer and employee are related persons. However, services provided by an employee to the employer in the course or in relation to his employment are outside the scope of GST. Neither treated as goods or supply of service. Gifts by employer to employee. Further, proviso to para two of schedule one provides that gifts up to fifty thousand in a financial year. By an employer to an employee shall not be treated as supply of goods or services or both. However, gifts of value more than fifty thousand made without consideration are supply. And are subject to GST when made in course or furtherance of business. The term gift has not been defined in the GST law. In common parlance, gift is made without consideration, it is voluntary in nature and it is made occasionally. It cannot be demanded as a matter of right by the employee and the employee cannot move to a court of law for obtaining a gift. Perquisites by employer to employee. Since services by an employee to the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment or outside the scope of GST. Supply by the employer to the employee in terms of contractual agreement entered into between the employer and employee. Will not be subject to GST. Any requisites provided by the employer to its employee in terms of contractual agreement entered to. Entered into between the employer and the employee are regarded as services provided by the employee to the employer in relation of. In relation to his employment. It follows therefrom that requisites provided by the employer to the employee in terms of contractual agreement entered into between. The employer and the employee will not be subject to GST. Further, the input tax credit scheme under GST does not allow. I T C of membership of a club, health and fitness center. It follows therefore that if such services are provided free of charge to all the employees by the employer, then the same will not be subject to GST. The same would however hold true for free housing. The same would hold true for free housing to the employees when the same is provided in terms of the contract between the employer. And employee and as part and parcel of the cost to the company. Okay, moving on, principal agent. Para three of schedule one, supply of goods by a principal to his agent without consideration. Where the agent undertakes to supply such goods on behalf of the principal is considered as supply. Similarly, supply of goods by an agent to his principal without consideration. Where the agent undertakes to receive such goods on behalf of the principal is considered as supply. Point which merit, points which merit consideration is in this regard are as follows. Only supply of goods and not supply of services is covered here. Supply of goods between principal and agent without consideration is also a supply. Thus, the supply of services between the principal and the agent and vice versa would require consideration to be present. So has to be considered as supply, thus making it liable to GST. In order to determine whether a particular principal-agent relationship falls within the ambit of. The para three of schedule one as discussed above or not, the deciding factor is whether the invoice for the supply. For the further supply of goods on behalf of the principal is being issued by the agent or not. In other words, the crucial point is whether or not the agent has the authority to pass or receive the title of the goods on behalf of the principal. Where the invoice for further supply is being issued by the agent in his name, then any provision of goods from the principal. To the agent would fall within the fold of para three above. However, where the invoice is issued by the agent to the customer in the name of the principal. Such agent shall not fall within the ambit of para three above. Similarly, where the goods being procured by the agent on behalf of principal are invoiced in the name of the agent, then. Further provision of the said goods by the agent to the principal would be covered by para three. Now, let us see the examples. Unmold appoints Bolu to procure certain goods from the market. Bolu identifies various suppliers who can provide the goods as desired by Unmold. And asks the supplier Golu to send the goods to, send the goods and to issue the invoice directly to Unmold. In this scenario, Bolu is only acting as a procurement agent and has in fact. No way involved himself in the supply or receipt of the goods. Hence, in accordance with the provision of the act, Bolu is not an agent for Unmold for supply of goods in terms of. Para three to uh schedule one. Money Money Bank, a banking company appoints Mandar to auction certain goods. The auctioneer arranges for the auction and identifies the potential bidders. The highest bid is accepted and the goods are sold to the highest bidder by Money Money Bank. The invoice for the supply of goods is issued by Money Money Bank to the successful bidder. In this scenario, auctioneer is merely providing the auctioneering services with no role played in the supply of goods. Even in this scenario, Mandar is not an agent of Money Bunny Bank for the supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. Gautam, an artist appoints Gambhir, an auctioneer, to auction his painting. Gambhir arranges for the auction, identifies the potential bidders. The highest bid is accepted and the painting is sold to the highest bidder. The invoice for the supply of the painting is issued by Gambhir on behalf of Gautam, but in his own name, in his, in Gambhir's name itself. And the painting is delivered to the successful bidder. In this scenario, Gambhir is not just providing auctioneering services, but is also supplying the painting on behalf of Gautam to the bidder. And has the authority to transfer the title of the painting on behalf of Gautam. This scenario is covered under para three of schedule one. A clearing and forwarding agent or commission agent takes possession of the goods from the principal and issues the invoice in his own name. In such cases, C N of commission agent is an agent of the principal for the supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. The disclosure or non-disclosure of the name of the principal is immaterial in such situation. Ravi sells agricultural produce by utilizing the services of Kavi, who is a commission agent as per. The Agricultural Produce Marketing Committee Act, A P M C Act of the state. Kavi identifies the buyers and sells the agricultural produce on behalf of Ravi, for which he charges a commission from Ravi. Okay, as per the A P M C Act, commission agent is a person who buys and sells the agricultural produce on behalf of the principal. Or facilitates buying and selling of agricultural produce on behalf of his principal and receives by way of remuneration. A commission or percentage upon the amount involved in such transaction. In cases where the invoice is issued by Kavi to the buyer, then he is an agent uncovered under para three. However, in cases where the invoice is directly issued by Ravi to the buyer, then commission agent Kavi doesn't fall under the category of para three. Okay. Classif- clarification of issues pertaining to Delcreder agent. A question was posed by the industry whether supply between principal and a Delcreder agent would also get covered under schedule one. The government clarified the doubt of the industry by way of the following clarification. Before going through the clarification, let us first understand what is meant by a D C A. In commercial trade parlance, a D C A is a selling agent who is engaged by a principal. To assist in supply of goods and services by contacting potential buyers on behalf of the principal. The factor that differentiates a D C A from other agents is that D C A guarantees the payment to the supplier. In such scenarios where the buyer fails to make payment to the principal by the due date. D C A makes the payment to the principal on behalf of the buyer effectively providing an insurance against default by the buyer. And for this reason, the commission paid to the D C A may be relatively higher than that paid to a normal agent. In order to guarantee timely payment to the supplier, D C A can resort to various methods, including extending. Short-term transaction-based loans to the buyer or paying the supplier himself and recovering the amount from the buyer. With some interest at a later date. This loan is to be repaid by the buyer along with an interest to the D C A at a rate mutually agreed by. Agreed between D C A and the buyer. Now, let us see the issues. Whether a D C A falls under the ambit of agent under para three of schedule one. So, the clarification is, in case where the invoice for supply of goods is issued by the supplier to the customer. Either himself or through D C A, the D C A does not fall under the ambit of agent. However, in case where the invoice for supply of goods is issued by the D C A himself in his own name. The D C A would fall under the ambit of agent. Okay, the second question is, whether the temporary short-term transaction-based loan extended by the D C A to the recipient. For which interest is charged by the D C A is to be included in the value of goods being supplied by the supplier. Where D C A is not an agent under para three of schedule one. In this scenario, in such a scenario, following activities are taking place. Supply of goods from principal to a recipient. Supply of agency services from D C A to the supplier or recipient or both. Supply of extension of loan services by the D C A to the recipient. It is clarified that in cases where the D C A is not an agent under para three of schedule one. The temporary short-term transaction-based loan being provided by D C A to the buyer is a supply of service by the D C A. To the recipient on principal-to-principle basis and it is an independent supply. Let's say, in this situation, the invoice is issued by the principal, that is a supplier to the recipient. And the D C A is just acting like an agent only between them, just ensuring that collection to the supplier. So, let's say the buyer also defaulted, so the D C A has given loan to the buyer to repay the supplier. Or the D C A himself has made payment to the supplier and converted that payment as a loan to the buyer. So, in this situation, the fact that the guy has, the D C A has given loan to the buyer, will it be. Part of the original supply, which is the supplier selling goods to the buyer. Will it be clubbed with that old supply or is it treated as a separate supply? The answer is it is treated as separate supply because the loan given by the D C A to the buyer is a separate transaction. Okay, therefore, the interest being charged by the D C A would not form part of the value of supply of the original goods supplied by the supplier, so it is a separate thing. Okay, next. Where D C A is an agent under para three of schedule one and makes payment to the principal on behalf of the buyer. And charges interest to the buyer for delayed payment along with the value of goods being supplied. Whether the interest will form part of the value of supply of goods also or not. In this scenario, supply of goods by the supplier to the D C A, further supply of. Goods by the D C A to the recipient. Supply of agency services by the D C A to the supplier or the recipient or both and then extension of. Credit by the D C A to the recipient. It is clarified that in these cases, so in this case, the la- latest case. D C A in the first cut itself, he becomes like an agent for the supplier. Because he is invoi- is issuing invoice in his own name, D C A is invoicing issue in his own name of the goods supplied by the supplier. So, he is fairly an agent under para three. Therefore, the second supply that he has given, that extension of credit, it will be clubbed along with the original supply. So, let us read this. It is clarified that in cases where the D C A is an agent under para three of schedule one. The temporary short-term transaction-based credit being provided by D C A to the buyer no longer retains its character as an independent supplier. And it is subsumed in the supply of goods by the D C A to the recipient. It is emphasized that the activity of extension of credit by the D C A to the recipient would not be considered as a separate supply. As it is in the context of supply of goods made by the D C A to the recipient. It is further classified that, clarified that the value of interest charged for such credit would be required to be included in the value of. Supply of goods by D C A to the recipient as per section fifteen subsection two clause D. So, we have come to the conclusion of. The second segment, we have covered round three. Of these pages, page number thirty-two to forty-two. Now, let us go to segment number three, which is a round two revision of whatever we studied, page number sixty-two to sixty-five. Page number two point six two, non-supplies clarified by way of circular. C B I C has clarified that following activities or transactions are non-supplies, interstate movement of various modes of conveyance. Like moving trains, moving buses, trucks, tankers, trailers, vessels, containers, aircrafts. Carrying goods or passengers or both or for repairs and maintenance. Except in cases where such movement is for further supply of the same conveyance, shall be treated neither as. Supply of goods or supply of service and therefore not be leviable to I G S T. Similarly, however, applicable C G S T, S G S T, I G S T as the case may be shall be leviable on repairs and maintenance done for such conveyance. So, again, the example that I can think of, the scenario I am thinking of is, let's say, Ashok Leyland makes buses. And it is made in Hosur and the buses have been completely manufactured. Now, Karnataka State Road Transport Corp, K S R T C has ordered like, let's say fifty buses. So, these finished buses will be moved to Karnataka. So, it is an interstate movement, such interstate movement is exempt is what they are saying. Except in cases where such movement is for further supply of the same conveyance. So, let's say, Ashok Leyland is moving goods, but buyer is not K S R T C, buyer is let's say some other dealer of Ashok Leyland. And that dealer is going to sell it later to some other party. In this case, then I think that transfer will be deemed as supply, it will be leviable to tax. But anyway, the movement of goods, all these trains, buses and everything for repair purposes will be. Uh, it, it will not be covered under exemption, it will be chargeable to GST. Interstate movement of rigs, tools and spares and all goods on wheels like cranes. Above circular shall mutatis mutandis, apply to interstate movement of rigs, tools and spares and all goods on wheels. Like cranes, except in case where such movement is for further supply of the same goods. Such interstate movement shall be treated neither as a supply of goods or supply of service. And consequently, no I G S T would be applicable on such movements. In this context, it is also reiterated that applicable C G S T and uh. C G S T, S G S T, I G S T as the case may be is leviable on repairs and maintenance done for such goods. Which of the following activities are. Which of the following activities are considered neither as supply of goods nor supply of services? Interstate movement of trucks between distinct persons for repairs and maintenance, no. It will be considered as supply only because repairs and maintenance is not covered under the circular. So, it will be considered as supply only. Grant of mining rights by government businesses. So, government, only the fact that government gives this alcoholic liquor license, that is not considered as supply but mining rights, all this spectrum and everything will be covered under G S T which we read yesterday. Services provided by an employer to the employee. By an employer to the employee, I think the question is wrong. Services provided by an employee to the employer as part of employment agreement, that will not be covered under supply. And lottery, lottery is definitely an actionable claim. It is specifically included to be called as supply. In the preceding paras, we have discussed how to determine whether a given activity or transaction constitutes a supply. Once an activity or transaction qualifies as supply, one needs to determine whether the same is leviable to G S T or not. Though the provision relating to levy and collection of G S T have been discussed in the next chapter, a brief idea is given here. Supply leviable to G S T. For a tax to attract G S T, primarily two additional conditions needs to be satisfied, need to be satisfied. These are, supply must be made by a taxable person and supply must be a taxable supply. So, who is a taxable person? The restriction of being a taxable person is only on the supplier whereas the recipient can either be taxable or non-taxable. A taxable person is a person who is registered or liable to be registered under Section Twenty-two or Section Twenty-four. Hence, a person who is liable to be registered but does not take a registration and remains an unregistered person shall be construed as a taxable person. Similarly, a person who not liable to be registered but has got himself registered by taking a voluntary registration is also a taxable person, taxable supply. For a supply to attract G S T, the supply must be taxable. Taxable supply has been broadly defined and means, any sup- has been broadly defined and means any supply of goods or services or both which is leviable to tax under the G S T law. On the other hand, exempt supply means supply of any goods or services or both which attract nil rate of tax or which may be wholly exempt from tax includes and includes a non-taxable supply. Okay, exemptions are discussed in detail in chapter number five. Okay, now let us talk about composite and mixed supply. A composite supply comprising is, it is a supply comprising two or more supplies, one of which is a principal supply and shall be treated as a supply of such principal supply. And a mixed supply comprising of two or more supplies shall be treated as a supply of that particular supply that attracts highest rate of tax. G S T is payable on goods and services or both at the notified rates. Classification, oh no, no, G S T is payable on goods or services or both at the notified rates. Classification of any supply whether, uh, whether as goods or as services, the category of goods or services is essential to determine the applicable rate of G S T on the particular supply. The application of rates poses no problem if the supply of goods, if the supply is of goods, individual goods and individual services which is clearly identifiable and such goods or services are subject to a particular rate of tax. Okay, now from here, we are going to study new for the day. However, in certain cases, supplies are not such simple and clearly identifiable. Sometimes, supplies are a combination of goods or combination of services or combination of goods and services both and each individual component of such supplies may attract a different rate of tax. In such a case, the rate of tax to be levied on such supplies may be a challenge. It is for this reason that the G S T law identifies composite supplies and mixed supplies and provides certainty in respect of tax treatment under G S T for such supplies. In order to determine whether the supplies are composite supplies or mixed supplies, one needs to determine whether the supplies are naturally bundled or not naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. The concept of naturally bundled supplies is emanating from the definition of composite supplies. Okay, composite supply means a supply made by a person to a recipient and comprises two or more taxable supplies of goods or services or both or any combination thereof. Okay, which are naturally bundled and supplied in conjunction with each other in the ordinary course of business, one of which is a principal supply. This means that in a composite supply, goods or services or both are bundled owing to natural necessities. The elements in a composite supply are dependent on the principal supply. Principal supply means the supply of goods or services which constitutes the predominant element of a composite supply and to which any other supply forming part of that composite supply is ancillary. Works contract and restaurant services are classic examples of composite supplies. But the G S T law identifies both as supply of services as you would have seen in the discussion on Schedule Two, yes, we saw. It is to be completely treated as, uh, supply of services and chargeable to specific rate of tax mentioned against each of such services, works contract or restaurant. However, in respect of other composite supplies, that is other than the two categories mentioned above, the need to determine the supply as a composite one will arise so as to determine the appropriate classification of such supply as supply of goods or supply of services as also the appropriate and also the appropriate rate of tax. It will be necessary to determine as to whether a particular supply is naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business and what constitutes principles supply in such composite supplies. How to determine whether the services are bundled in the ordinary course of business? Whether the services are bundled in the ordinary course of business or not would depend upon the normal or frequent practices followed in the area of business which, to which, to which, sorry. Whether the services are bundled in the ordinary course of business or not would depend upon the normal or frequent practices followed in the area of business to which services relate. So, you follow the normal or frequent practices followed, okay. Such normal and frequent practices adopted in a business can be ascertained from several indicators of, uh, several indicators, some of which are listed below. The perception of the consumer, the or the service recipient. If large number of service recipient of such bundle of services reasonably expect such services to be provided as a package, then such a package could be treated as naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. Mobile phone is always sold with battery. Okay, majority of service providers in a particular area of business provide similar bundle of services. Bundle of services of catering on board and services of transport by air is a bundle offered by majority of airlines. Okay, the nature of the services in a bundle of services will also help in determining whether the services are bundled in the ordinary course of business. If, if the nature of services is such that one of the services is the main service and the other services combined with such services are in the nature of incidental or ancillary service, services which help in better enjoyment of a main service, then it would be treated as services bundled in the ordinary course of business. Service of stay in a hotel is often combined with the provision of breakfast and dinner provided free of cost during the stay. Such service is an ancillary service to the provision of hotel accommodation and the resultant package would be treated as services naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. Other illustrative indicators, not determinative but indicative of bundling of services in the ordinary course of business are, there is a single price or the customer pays the amount, pays the same amount no matter how much of the package they actually receive or use. The elements are normally advertised as a package. The different elements are not available separately. The different elements are integral to one overall supply. If one or more is removed, the nature of supply would be affected. Okay, now, they have given an area of emphasis here. Let us read that. No straight jacket formula can be laid down to determine whether a service is naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. Each case has to be individually examined in the backdrop of several factors, some of which are outlined above. The above principles explained in the light of what constitutes a naturally bundled service can be gainfully adopted to determine whether a particular supply constitutes a composite supply under G S T and if so, what constitutes the principal supply so as to determine the right classification and rate of tax of such composite supply. Okay, now let us see some examples. A five-star hotel is booked for a conference of hundred delegates on a lump sum package with the following facilities. Accommodation for the delegates, breakfast for the delegates, tea and coffee during confer- conference, access to fitness rooms for the delegates, availability of conference room, business center. As is evident, a boutique of services is being provided. Many of them are chargeable to different effective rates of tax. If the principal service is described as convention service, it is able to capture the entire essence of the package. Thus, the principal service may be judged as convention service and charged to tax accordingly. However, it will be fully justifiable for the hotel to charge individually for the services as long as there is no attempt to offload the value of one service, one service on to the, on to another service that is chargeable at a concessional rate. Okay, however, it is fully justifiable for the hotel to charge individually for the services as long as there is no attempt to offload the value of one service on to the another service that is chargeable at a concessional rate. I am not able to understand this part. No attempt to what offload the value of one service on to the, on to another service that is chargeable at a concessional rate. This part I am not able to understand. Anyway, let me proceed. Poshak manufacturers enter, entered into a contract with Chiku Limited for supply of ready-made shirts packed in designer boxes at Chiku Limited's outlet. Further, Poshak manufacturers would also get them insured during transit. In this case, supply of goods, packing materials, transport and insurance is a composite supply wherein supply of goods is a principal supply. When a consumer buys a television set and he also gets mandatory warranty and a maintenance contract with the T V, this supply is a composite supply. In this example, supply of T V is the principal supply, warranty and maintenance services are ancillary. A travel ticket from Mumbai to Delhi may include service of food being served on board, free insurance and the use, use of airport lounge. In this case, the transportation of passenger constitutes the predominant element of the composite supply and is treated as the principal supply and all other supplies are ancillary. How to determine the tax liability on composite supplies? A composite supply comprising of two or more supplies, one of which is a principal supply shall be treated as a supply of such principal supply. Accordingly, the entire value of composite supply, that is main supply and ancillary shall be classified under the category of main supply and shall be taxed at the G S T rate applicable to the main supply. This can be better understood with the help of the following example. Rati Computers supplies laptop worth fifty-two thousand along with laptop bag worth three thousand to a customer for fifty-five thousand. Being naturally bundled, supply of laptop bag along with the laptop is a composite supply which is treated as the supply of the principal supply, that is the laptop. Assuming that the rate of tax applicable to laptop is eighteen and laptop bag is twenty-eight, in the given case, the rate of principal supply of eighteen percentage will be charged on the entire value of fifty-five thousand. C B I C in the following cases has clarified issues as to whether the given supplies are composite supply and if yes, what constitutes the principal supply in the given composite supply. Printing industry issues. The printing industry in India in a particular, in particular faced a dilemma in determining whether the nature of supply provided was that of goods and goods or services. Another doubt was whether in case where the, where certain contracts involved, another doubt was whether in case where certain contracts involved both supply of goods and services, whether the same would constitute a supply of goods or services or if it would be a composite supply and in case it is, then what would constitute the principal supply? Thus, it is clarified that supply of books, pamphlets, brochures, envelopes, annual reports, leaflets, cartons, boxes, et cetera, printed with logo, design, name, address or other contents supplied by the recipient of such printed goods or composite supplies and the question whether such supplies constitute supply of goods or services would be determined on the basis of what constitutes the principal supply. In the case of printing of books, pamphlets, brochures, annual reports and the like, where only the content is supplied by the publisher or the person who owns the usage rights to the intangible inputs while the physical inputs including paper used for printing belonging to the printer, supply of printing of the content supplied by the recipient of supply is the principal supply and therefore such supplies would constitute supply of service. In case of supply of printed envelopes, letter cards, printed boxes, tissue, napkin, wall, wallpaper, et cetera, the printer using its physical inputs including the paper to print the design logo supplied by the recipient of the goods predominantly, the predominant supply is supply of goods. Okay, and the supply of printing of the content is ancillary to the principle of principal supply of goods and therefore such supplies would constitute supply of goods. Okay. Food supplied to the patients. Food supplied to the inpatients as advised by the doctor or nutritionist is a part of composite supply of healthcare and is not separately taxable. Others, other supplies of food by a hospital to patients or their attendants or visitors are taxable. Activity of bus body building. In the case of bus body building, there is supply of goods and services. Thus, classification of this sup- In the case of bus body building, there is supply of goods or services. Thus, classification of this composite supply as goods or service would depend on which supply is the principal supply which may be determined on the basis of facts and the circumstances of each case. Retreading of tires. In retreading of tires which is a composite supply, the predominant element is process of retreading which is a supply of service. Rubber used for retreading is an ancillary supply. Supply of retreder tires where the old tires belong to the supply of retreder tires is a supply of goods. Retreader tires are the, are revamped tires on which the worn-out tread, the part of the tire that makes contact to the surface of the road is replaced using new tread. Okay. Where the old tires belong to the supplier of retreder tires, this is a supply of goods. Okay, we will just read till here and finish for the day. Supply of food and beverages at cinema halls taxable as a restaurant service. Eating joint is a wide term which includes refreshment or eating stalls, kiosks, counters or restaurants at a cinema also. The cinema operator may run these refreshment eating stalls, chaos counter restaurant themselves or they may give it on contract to a third party. The customer may like to avail the services supplied by the, these refreshment or snack counters or choose not to avail these services. Further, the cinema operator can also install vending machines or supply any recreational service such as through coin-operated machines, et cetera, which a customer may or may not avail. It is hereby clarified that supply of food or beverages in a cinema hall is taxable as a restaurant service as long as the food or beverages are supplied by way of or as part of a service and supplied independent of the cinema exhibition service. Where the sale of cinema ticket and supply of food and beverages are clubbed together and such bundled supply satisfy the test of composite supply, the entire supply will attract G S T at the rate of applicable ser- uh, uh, mean, the entire supply will attract G S T at the rate applicable to service of exhibition of cinema, the principal supply. So, on that note, we will wrap up for the day. Let me quickly note down our progress today. Supply under G S T from page number two point six-six to two point seven-two. Isn't it? Isn't it? We started from here. We started from here. Hmm, so yeah, six-six-two, seven-two, two, four, six, seven pages we have read today, seven new pages, that's a good thing. Seventeenth October, two thousand twenty-five is today's date. So these are the due dates of round two, round three, round four and round five. Okay, I think we are almost at the end of the supply of uh supply under G S T chapter. Eighty-five pages are there, so I think in a couple of days we will finish this chapter and we will go to charge, charge of G S T. Thank you for joining today, I will see you tomorrow, bye-bye.